Right, is it full supplemental?
Yes, thank you. If staff can pull up the presentation. Okay, thank you. So today we're doing a work session for the 2021 Fall Supplemental. Next slide, please. We're gonna, I'm gonna discuss the overview of the process that we've used, recommendations today. Obtain any feedback or questions from the council, and this is all in preparation for our public hearing that is scheduled for October 19. And next slide, please. So just as a reminder, RCW 3640 allows for supplemental budget appropriations as needed throughout the budget year. Specific situations where supplemental budget requests are warranted include any unforeseen situation which puts the safety and welfare of citizens of Clark County at risk, and the unforeseen situations which hinders the ability of the department or office to fulfill statutory obligations, labor contract settlements, legal settlements, or other judgments that exceed those amounts currently available within the current budget, and any unforeseen revenue sources that are associated with expenditures such as grants. Next, next slide, please. Departments actually submitted offices, offices and departments submitted requests on August 16. I did have an opportunity to meet with all the departments as well as the finance team to obtain their feedback on their request. I do want to just shout out, I appreciate all the departments' mindfulness as we went through this process and also the finance team's feedback as well. Today, we're doing the council work session, and again, the public hearing is scheduled for October 19. There were 73 requests that were submitted in this supplemental. Eighteen were already approved by the council. Sixteen were budget neutral. There were three technical adjustments, one budget intervention, two carry forward requests, which are requests that were previously approved but may, the project may not have been done, so it's carrying forward those funds to ensure that we can conclude projects. And there were 33 new requests that were submitted. Out of the 73 change requests, I am recommending 68 of the 73, and 27 of them of the recommended change requests do have a general fund impact. And later on in the presentation, I will be going over all the requests in more detail. This is just a summary of by fund of how much, based on the request, how it will hit the fund. This is on reports that are submitted online. Anybody in the public can go on and see all the reports that are submitted that support these. Okay, next slide, please. And one more slide. Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to do a quick summary. I know 73 seems a lot, but I hopefully can get through this quickly. So I'm gonna start going through them. I do have my colleagues online today if there are specific questions, and of course, if they're not available, or if we need additional resource, research, we can certainly do that before the hearing. So for previously approved by the council, the first one is assigned fund balance and the amount of 23.1 million. The council did approve this in April 2020. It was setting aside specific money for general liability insurance fund and the amount of 10 million. Equipment rental and revolving fund, which is fleet for 10 million, and major maintenance is 3.1 million. Project position to manage the ARPA funding in the auditor's office. Another .6 FTE revenue funded position that was funded by a new grant for CJC that was about $49,000. Increase the general fund subsidy to the planning and code fund for land use review fees, which is about 141,000, as well as wetland and habitat review fees, which is about 183,000. This, and I will note on this one, the staff is currently reviewing the fee structure and will be coming back to the council with proposals. A lot of those fees have not been updated in many years, so there is an opportunity where we can evaluate that fees, that fee structure moving forward, and hopefully lessen the money that we're having to subsidize from general fund. Permit center upgrade using ARPA funds. This was to help equip staff with sit, stand, desk, cameras, et cetera, to help continue their services during the pandemic. Community development to utilize ARPA funding to provide public outreach, education, training, and the community to provide services more accessible and efficiently. Also, ARPA funding for district court. They had four different information systems, infrastructure, such as replacing their desktop computers with laptops and docking stations, Zoom licenses for virtual courts and others. ARPA funding for the space planning and remodeling of $2 million. Increase budget capacity using ARPA funding to support indigenous defense case backlogs. This is for indigenous defense specifically. ARPA funding for network infrastructure refresh and the amount of just over eight and a half million. This was approved back in June of 2021. The prosecuting attorney's office has submitted a staff report using ARPA funding to fund 11 FTE requests to support the backlog in their office due to COVID. That amount was about $400,000. Positions in public health that included like a project, a program coordinator, and office assistants and others, 224,000. Budget capacity for previously approved project positions supporting the ME's office that included an autopsy assistant and an OA3. Purchase telematics equipment for fleet services. This was approved back in May of 2021. This allows management to locate vehicles in real time, look at engine performance reports, asset protection, and et cetera. So it is, I think we had a work session on this with the council as well with the fleet department. Funding for a consultant to advise Superior Court regarding their backlog due to COVID and the amount of 20,500. So all of those have already been approved by council. This is just the technical piece to get that buddy, or that money in the budget capacity available. Specifically, technical adjustments, there are three. Align transfer revenue and expenditure budgets in 2021. There's no impact for general fund on this. Correct expense coding. This corrects budget coding between departments of behavior, health, and juvenile court within the mental health sales tax fund. This action is budget neutral, just making sure that it's hitting the right areas. And also Superior Court is, wants to correct department coding for a project position that was previously approved by the council to make sure that we're hitting the right budget for that. The two carry forward requests, one is to increase the 2020 revenue and expenses in the amount of 57,000. This is in district court. They continue to operate virtually for many dockets and incurred additional costs for pro temp judges to assist with the additional workload and flow. The council did previously approve the AOC CARES Act funding in 2020 in the amount of 337,000. This $57,000 was not spent yet, so therefore they're looking at carrying that forward. And then there were two projects that were previously approved by the council, the event center ticket booth project and an HVAC upgrade. So this is a request to carry forward funding for those projects that have not been spent yet. There are quite a couple of budget neutral items. A lot of these are grants, and you'll see that as I get through these ones. About half a million dollar revenue expenses for small projects. Oh, this is actually, yes, small projects that have not been identified. So this is for ARPA funding. This is only so that we have capacity. If there are certain projects that we want to look at through the end of the year, this does not inhibit our ability to put projects in front of the council for transparency purposes. It, there is a, something needs to be adjusted that will clean up for the hearing, and that is it's stated as ongoing funding, but as you know, ARPA funding is only one time. So we will clean that up before the actual hearing. And again, this is just putting some capacity aside if there are small, small projects in which we want to move forward with in the ARPA funding. Budget appropriation, revenue and expenses to receive and transfer 911 tax revenue. If this was not a prerequisite, would not have the appropriate budget capacity to do the transfer, and that's about 395,000. The council previously approved the baseline of 350,000 for the affordable housing fund, which is Fund 1040. This will add capacity, both revenue and expenses in addition, in an additional amount of 450,000. Therefore, community services can utilize these funds to help continue to support affordable housing in the community. The clerk is currently using Liberty Net as a document management system. This system is terminating at the end of the year. They're no longer going to be providing that system. This is to provide a one-time funding to start a conversion to OnBase. And I've had a lot of conversations with the clerk's office as well as Superior and District Court, who are customers of this system. And while I do recognize that this, this is under the clerk's responsibility, based on my conversations with them as well as the courts, I would highly recommend that they continue conversations to ensure the most efficient, both operationally and financially, evaluation continues on this program. We have a lot of systems that hits a lot of our customers, and we just want to make sure that we're utilizing the best possible. So this is a one-time funding request to do that. There will be a supplement budget request prior for 2022 for ongoing. Increase the budget authority for Fund 1936, which is weatherization energy fund for low-income housing energy assistance program grant. This is for three and a half million, community services. Again, another increased budget authority amount of just over 400,000 for community development block grant coronavirus CARES Act funds. This funding assistance is to low and moderate income residents. Home ARPA grants in the amount of 2 million to be used for items such as people, assisting people with risk of experiencing homelessness, people attempting to flee domestic violence, dating violence, stalking, sexual assault, human trafficking, and et cetera. This funding does come directly from HUD. And add additional 530,000 in additional funding capacity for the LIHEP, weatherization, energy, American Rescue Plan grant, which provides assistance to low-income persons in response to COVID. Increase budget capacity to increase grant funding in the amount of about 600,000 for existing services, including employment support and community inclusion support for individuals with developmental disabilities. District Court is also requesting approval to enter into a two-year grant agreement with Ecology, Solid Waste Management, Community Litter Cleanup Program in the amount of 63,000. This is a cooperative venture that involves the District Court Community Restitution Program, Public Works, the PUD, and other municipalities. Some of the work that they do is roadside cleanup. They pick up litter and debris from roadside areas adjacent to streams and other areas. Update revenue and expenditures based on collections for the Tri Mountain Golf Course in the amount of $65,000. Update revenue and expenditures in the amount of about 6,000 for the leasehold tax collection and dispersment. This is for parking passes and some rental properties that are submitted to the state quarterly. And then finally, on budget neutral request, increase budget capacity for the Juvenile Detention Alternatives or JDI grant funding. This is for July 2021 to December 2021 in the amount of just over $4,500. Under the new request, assess, the assessors requesting spending authority increase of 45,000 to enhance revaluation programs for vertical and oblique photos. This fund is from the Special Real Estate and Property Tax Administration Assistance Account with specified funding earmarked for any enhancing technology and systems for both the assessor and the treasurer under the RCW. Secondly, the auditor. We have had a number of increases in our insurance, and they are asking to increase the expense authority in the amount of 4 million due to the medical expense increasing. Prior year submissions that were only identified as one time, not ongoing. This request is for an ongoing amount. There is adequate funding in the fund balance to cover the additional expense capacity. ARPA funding for revenue recovery loss due to COVID-19. This is $10 million from ARPA to the general fund. And I will note that this is actually a budget intervention, not necessarily a new one. This is a new parameter under the ARPA funding that we did not have access to in the CARES Act. One-time general fund request to cover increase in the Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization or RDPO. The amount is based on population increase, and since our population increased recently, there is an additional expense of about $3,000. Update the debt fund payments based on data provided by the treasurer's office. This is an additional 10,000. A budget appropriation is required to ensure that public source trust fund obligation can be met. The general fund sales tax revenue. So if you remember, we budgeted 2021 flat, just with the unknowns with COVID, and how that was going to impact our sales tax. Our sales tax is actually doing very well. So this is to update the sales tax coming in to increase the budgeted revenue by $8 million and assign 1.9 of that, or 1.9 million to the reserve, which is per policy. So that is very good news. Our community members are still spending money in our community, and we're able to adjust our budget accordingly. One-time additional contingency for mental health sales tax, allowing flexibility to ensure departments are able to meet their salary obligations in 2021. There is adequate fund balance, and the amount is about 200,000. A one-time transfer of cash and budget authority to manage reimbursable COVID grant funds. And then the next few I'm gonna talk about are insurance rates, and I will just say all of our rates are going up for several reasons, and I'll go over these, but it's, you know, it's not just us. It's in the state of Washington and in other states as well. The first one, State of Washington Department of Labor and Industries are implementing a COLA increase in the amount of 10.1% to all workers on time loss. This will result in the need to increase our expense authority and the workers' comp insurance fund by approximately $70,000. The existing fund balance will cover the cost for this increase. Increase in cyber insurance rates and the amount of $63,000 per year. Rates increase by more than 19%. The increase will be distributed to all the users of the fund through an allocation based on the risk group and FTE. There's an increase in the excess workers' comp insurance. Rates increased by 40% effective in November of this year, or November 2021. So the two-month cost is approximately $5,000. This request is an increase in the expense capacity and will be covered by existing fund balance as well. There's also an increase in property insurance rates in the amount of 80,000. Premiums across all the lines of coverage have seen significant increases due to natural disasters, COVID, cyber ransom attacks, civil unrest, and other items. This increase will be covered by distributing of the cost to all users of the fund through an allocation based on their risk group and FTE. And of course, we have an increase in our risk legal costs. This request is asking for an increase in expense authority in the amount of one and a half billion dollars due to the increase in claims and legal fees. Expense authority will be covered by the fund balance reserves and will be distributed to all users of the fund. Increase in expense authority in the amount of $8,200. This is an increase in the workers' comp rate because we do have employees who live in Oregon, and we need to make sure that we have coverage, workers' comp coverage for them in Oregon. So this is about $8,200,000 or $8,200. There is enough fund balance to cover these expenses. And then on to other increases. Postage has an increase this year, so in order to meet our postage budget, we need an increase in $2,500 for the fall tax statements. The budget office is wanting to use salary savings from the budget office and move 40,000 one-time to the technology reserve to support the Questica Budget Software Capital Module. The implementation project was delayed to quarter one of 2022. Request for ARPA funding for laptops for community services. This is replacing 29 desktops, computers with laptops, the amount of $30,000. Juvenile update expenses and revenues based on actual grants that were received, and this was just under $10,000. One-time reimbursement for law library indirect costs. This is for liability insurance costs exceed previous reimbursed amounts in the amount of 6,800. Update public administration allocation to reflect the actual work that's being performed. Public Works also has aligned the current budget for county road projects with the 2021 Annual Construction Program that was amended from April 2021. So this is a program that the council reviews and approves, and this is just updating the budget to reflect the priorities of the council. One-time expense authority of 25,000 to replace an air conditioning unit in the fleet services shop building. It's about $25,000. As you know, we're doing a lot of work in Camp Bonneville with the Army and the Department of Ecology to clean up Camp Bonneville. That work is starting to come to an end. There is a work plan scheduled for 2022 that includes site-wide groundwater cleanup, action planning, and monitoring fence and road maintenance, and other routine maintenance and operations. More information on this program will be coming to the council soon. But with that said, Public Works is anticipating a significant reduction in their budget need, so that this would reduce the budget by approximately $3 million. Carry forward purchase of an automated flag or assistance device. So the council did previously approve this. But with that said, the approval did not include the ongoing budget appropriation for ERNR expenses in the amount of 19,000. This device is crucial in our community. It increases visibility on the roads versus a human flyer, so this will help with our safety on the roads. Increase expense authority to provide modifications to a hallway to create secure hallway and viewing area pursuant to a Washington State Supreme Court ruling. An amount of 12,000 for Superior Court. Superior Court is also requesting an increase in revenue and expense authority to align with CARES Act fund that the state administrative offices, the courts has allocated to the court. Superior Court has applied for and is unsuccessful in getting authority to seek reimbursement for actual anticipated costs related brought about by remote and in-person hearing trials. Superior Court also has increased budget authority to accept a Department of Commerce grant. This funding is anticipated to be a pass-through to the organization that administers the Clark County Court Appointed Special Advocates, which is $75,000. This is the cost of program. The Superior Court is asking for an increase in expenditure authority to address some payments in 2021 that should have been made in 2020. These are specifically for the YWCA for services provided in November, December 2020, and the amount is 85,000. One-time increase expense authority for Superior Court for the Zoom licensing fees for 2021. And then finally, increase the treasurer's operations and maintenance fund to accommodate rising reimbursement, recording, and foreclosure costs of $75,000. Just to note for the council, I will be at the hearing bringing forward at least a couple of amendments to the recommendations based on my conversations with the staff. The first one is community development. They have a continuous improvement in operations and maintenance agreement for CCLMS. This allows a system that's already been implemented to be troubleshooted and build on. The amendment that will be coming forward is a title change and the funding allocation update. So I just wanted to just put that on your radar. We don't do amendments today, but I will be bringing that forward in October. The second one that may be coming forward, actually, it was noted, I think, in the presentation as previously approved, is request for ARPA funding for upfront costs to implement a new contract and a Gatsby software to centralize all of our county contracts into one location. This is not recommended today simply because we're still having conversations internally and looking at our current systems like Workday. If this could be implemented using Workday, or if we truly need to go out for a different vendor. So it is something that is needed. We've had an internal audit regarding our contracts and something that we're committed to doing to ensure that we're doing efficient services moving forward. But we're still a little too soon to put this in front of the council for our commitment just yet. Not recommended. The clerk's office had submitted two different reports or two different decision packages regarding their document storage group, so that I recommended one, and I'm not recommending the ongoing, which was the full total conversion. Community Development also requested ARPA funds for laptops and docking stations. This was not recommended during the work session, as I know we have some, we may have some available laptops coming back from public health. But subsequently, I have learned that they've already purchased these, and they have money in their budget to cover it, so this will not be recommended. Animal Control is asking for updates on modules to CompuTronic, CCLMS software to cover animal control, Fire Marshal, which includes the burn and firework permits, clean water, and code enforcement. This is not being recommended today because we are in the middle of a systemic review or systematic review right now of all CCLMS, and so that whole project will be coming back from the council instead of the individual one. Additional security at public health. After conversations with staff, there is enough money in their budget to cover this, so this, this is not being recommended today. Public Health, they have a decision package. It's PBHO3, not being recommended now. There were some changes that were made after my conversations with public health, and I just want to make sure that what we have coming forward is accurately reflective. Part of that package in the work session that we had talked about, ARPA funding was the space needs for the MEO. So it's two different space things. One was, this one specifically was about the building, and I want to have that be part of the countywide space project, space things project conversation. And then additionally, Public Health did request a full-time program coordinator to position to provide oversight for the vital records program. We're still in conversations with HR and public health on this, so it's not being recommended at this time. And that is a summary of everything that's been submitted. Is there any questions right now, or do you want me to continue? I've got general fund forecast.
Madam Chair, I do-
Yes, go ahead.
I've got a page full of questions, Kathleen, that if I could, the first one is, after these allocations, these expenditures, what is going to be left of our allocation under ARPA? You know, the that 98 million total, how much would we have expended or committed after this general fund forecast? Or I'm sorry, after this supplemental request?
So the majority of the ARPA funding requests were already approved by the council. I will have to ask Mark Gasaway to come up with the, or to share what that amount is as of today. And I don't know if he's-
Yeah, I'd be interested in that because, you know, we need to allocate the remainder of it, too. And if we're running out of that allocation, I think we need to prioritize very carefully what we're doing. Another request I had was, we have talked about from time to time, stockpiling for public health, PPE, other consumables. As we move forward through the funding streams that we've had as a result of the pandemic, I don't know what the outcome was. Have we, in fact, gotten in front of some of that material that we were very short of in the beginning of this pandemic? Because there will be others. We're still in this one. So I did have a question about whatever happened to that notion of stockpiling equipment?
So I've had conversations with Cressa, and they do have a warehouse that is very full of some PPE, like mass and others, and because they coordinate for our area, so I can confirm with them, but there was no, this is just a supplemental. This is not an annual budget for next year. This is only for the 2021 supplemental, but I can certainly follow up, and there was no request that came forward requesting any additional funds for that. But I know Cressa did have a very healthy stock.
Okay, good to hear. So we had, I thought, created a category for nonprofits to make requests, as an example, LULAC and their proposal for a food bank. I didn't see any of the count accounting categories that kind of accounted for that. Where were we at on setting aside some of that ARPA money?
So that, yes, so that process will be coming to the council in council time to talk about like a grant process for you to review, so that has not happened yet. I believe, and I see Mark is on, but I, we do have the half a million that is being requested today to set aside for small projects just to get us through this year, but there's certainly opportunities for next year as well.
Okay, super. Thank you. So the last area that I'll cover right now is, you would use the word, this is the technical piece, to get these is this funding in place that's already been voted on by the council. I had missed the vote on the request for the 11 FTE for the prosecuting attorney's office. I had supported in my personal conversation with him the need for it because of the pandemic, the backlog of cases created, as well as the the drug possession Supreme Court decision that's thrown a monkey wrench into cases already prosecuted around the state. So that was, I think that amount for those 11 FTE was 400,000K. I'm really interested in putting a pause on that and not completing the technical piece until I've had further conversations with the prosecuting attorney. I have, I will personally share that I sent him an email request having another vacancy in his staff that goes to providing legal support to the council, and I've had no response whatsoever. And I'm very troubled by that. I'm sure there's an innocent explanation. But, and aside from what I've just said, I'm wondering if any of these other allocations have any support money for the prosecution? allocations have any support money for the prosecuting attorney buried in them? Whether it's IT support, office furniture, office space, secretarial support? Are there other accounting categories that provide support to the prosecuting attorney? Because if there are, I would like to know what they are. And I'd like to put a pause on all of it until we've had further conversations with the prosecuting attorney.
To my understanding during this, and today's not, the hearing is when the decisions will be made by the council and the final recommendation. But the prosecuting attorney, the only request that is turned in right now is that request that was previously approved. The only, and Emily can jump in if I'm missing something. The only other packages that would hit their budget, it's not necessarily giving them money. It's to cover for the increased rates for like insurance that's being allocated across all departments based on FTE and risk. So I don't believe that there's any other funding and funding requests that would be going to the prosecuting attorney's office.
So thank you. But as to this technical piece to get that 11 FTE funded, is there a way to pause that right now?
I am going to have to brainstorm that one a little bit because they, this is for FTE. I don't know. I was under the impression that they were already hiring FTE. There's not confirmation that any of that funding has hit the ARPA funding account. I did get that confirmation, but it could be that something has been transferred. So I would have to follow up with the prosecuting attorney. And I don't know, I mean, because it was already approved. I think the only possible way to address, to address that lowest level of talking with him directly first to see if he is willing to pause it. And Emily, if it was not approved in the supplemental based on how it's presented, would that terminate the funding? Or would a funding, a separate amendment need to be submitted to just reduce the prosecuting attorney's budget by that full amount?
I would, I would recommend further conversation to decide what the best course forward is. I would say that the 1041 fund, this particular package in this fall supplemental is creating the budget. So anything the prosecuting attorney may have started based on this, based on the staff report approval, they're using existing budget to get it going with the plan to move those expenses over to 1041 once this is adopted.
Okay, so if this was not approved by the council, then they would not receive the funds based on the previously approved staff report from ARPA.
But does that mean that the, I mean, does that encompass more funds than the PA's office?
No, it would be based on this conversation, they had a standalone request. It was not part of the package with other departments.
Okay. Good to know.
Yeah, but they may have hired, like Emily said, they may be using existing budget and may have already hired somebody using existing budget. So there may be a budget issue that they're not going to be able to come in within budget. But I can, I can reach out to Tony.
Thank you. Are there other questions of the council before we move to the general fund? I do have a question, but are there other questions at the council before we move to the general fund forecast?
I just have a comment, Madam Chair.
Okay, Council.
I just want to compliment you, Kathleen, on the way in which you go about your job here. 73 requests, something like that, and you are conversant on each and every one and can give further detail when you are asked about all of them. I appreciate that greatly. And you also did not just give a blanket approval to all of them, which is the easy way to deal with things. There was an analysis involved, and thank you for doing that.
Well, I, it's the staff that's on here as well. They, you know, they provide the information and I'm just sharing their story. So, but thank you.
You do a good job of that.
Yeah, well, knowing their stories thoroughly enough to answer rather than, you know, defer to them. It is appreciated. I have a question about, and there were some, for instance, community services, I guess, was having a technical, they had a technical request where they're replacing desktops with laptops. That kind of thing, and I know it's, it's relatively small based upon some of these other requests. But do we, we do RFPs for that kind of thing, don't we? Or do they?
For computers?
Right, yeah. I mean, do we look at various opportunities to save on that when, when we order that number of computers that are being ordered?
I'd have to, I know, I think we have a contract with regard to the computers that we order. But I can say, at least for community services, that, you know, they have a replacement schedule. There's money being put aside for future replacement, and so they are using their existing funds. Some of the replacement will increase a little bit because I think laptops are a little bit more expensive than desktops. But they are replacing desktops as well. So we're not having a double hit. So they are looking at their existing funds and the reserve. And then this is the difference that's not being covered. But it does provide for the, that flexibility of where they're working from.
Yeah, and I guess I noticed it because it's just a little over $1,000 a piece. So, you know, thank you, appreciate it.
So this is Michelle, we do have a contract with Dell for our computers here at the county.
I, that's what I thought as I looked at, at the request, because I was thinking, well, are they going to have computers? Like, are they getting Macs? And are they going to be able to communicate with other computers? But I noticed my laptop is a Dell, and I figured that is probably what, what's happening there. So thank you, appreciate it. Any other questions before we move on to general fund forecast? Okay, go ahead.
Next slide. So this was a really interesting slide for me to see. This is the first time I've seen this, and I, you know, Emily provided this. And it's really taking out any changes, recommendations, any modifications to the budget so that the council can see just strictly today, our revenue and expenditures and our general fund. So if there was, you know, because right now we are getting an extra money from ARPA, which can look like we have a lot of money. We do have a lot of money from ARPA. A lot of it's going back into the community based on council priorities. And then I will just say this as a quick side note. Community Services has put more money in the community than the entire state of Oregon. This is how Vanessa and Michael Torres and their entire staff have really stepped up. And it's also due to their relationships with our local partners who are putting the services in the community. So, so they, so the ARPA money, yes, there's a lot of money coming in. And, but it is a one-time use, and it is specific use. This is not showing ARPA funding, and this is not showing any modifications. And you can see just based on revenue and expenses, current revenue expenses, our expenses are still outpacing our revenues. So while, you know, we've got funding to help us get balanced hopefully in the next year or two, and you'll see that on the next slide. I did think that this was kind of telling and kind of made me look at it differently too, right? Because, you know, we, we do a lot of things to try to save money into balance every year, even before ARPA funding. But you can see that just with no S and with our normal inflation rates for property tax, sales tax, and our salary and benefits, you can see those projected growth on the side. It does show that we have a general fund ongoing structural deficit. So if you can go on to the next slide.
May I just interject right here, Kathleen, that once again, this shows us that we need to ask our legislative delegation to on session basis to offer up an opportunity for Clark County to keep more of what our taxpayers give to us because of our unique situation of being five minutes from the border, just across two bridges. And they have, Oregon has provided many wonderful retail outlets for Washingtonians to purchase their goods. So I'm, I'm I understand that some legislators may feel like they need to punish Washingtonians for doing that. However, we really have a very urban council, excuse me, county that we need to provide services for. So I just want to reiterate to my colleagues here that we need to make this a priority every single session because it's going to take quite a few sessions probably to pass it. But our delegation needs to see these numbers and understand what we are dealing with. And we need to make a passionate request and try to persuade them to do that for us. So, okay, thank you.
Okay, next slide. So this is the general fund forecast that has the recommendations. So you can see on the top, that was what was adopted in the 2021 budget. The budget forecast modifiers, and this is in the purple area. The top one is the, based on the recommendations today, it would be about 4.2 million in general fund requests. And then the project net revenue and expense savings of just under $4 million. This includes the $2 million we got from the state for criminal justice. This was the 2 million that showed up in our account on a Friday with no information. And we were trying to figure out where the money come from. And then on Monday, they are like, oh, yay, we're given county's money. So it had no restrictions, but it was just an acknowledgement for criminal justice. So that includes that $2 million. 1 million is in contingency savings that we're anticipating. That is a conservative number, so hopefully we'll have a little bit more in there when we close the year. Contingency is the money that we budget for any unknowns for like salary and benefits and stuff. So we always have to have that contingency in there, but we're on track at least for a million, if not more. And then the, the, the final million in that line item is purrs. The purrs, Washington State purrs, which is our retirement system, it has a reduction in the contributions. And so this is a savings that will affect our budget this year by approximately $1 million. Then the 3.5 million, so before, I think in our last supplemental, we had put in there 5 million. I believe the sheriff's office had previously put in packages. This is for the jail bed revenues. So the Otter's Office has been working very closely with the sheriff's office and getting the jail bed or billings up to date. And this is based on their analysis and what they're seeing coming in. This is still an estimate in the reduction. A lot of this is due to the change in population in the jail because of COVID. There was a lot of change on who's actually being housed and not. So this is a reduction in general fund revenue right now, anticipated about three and a half billion per year. And then, of course, the property tax penalty elimination. I know the treasurer's office is closely monitoring this and will update this as they continue their evaluation period for this. So with the, with that said, that would be a three, just under $3.7 million modifier in the budget. The projecting ending fund balance is just over 49 million. With that said, the fund balance, minimum fund balance per policy would be 30.3 million. That's about, and Mark can correct me, but I believe that's about 60 days operational expenses for the county per policy. And then the assigned fund, assigned fund balance for the compensated absences. So we budget about 25%. So if an employee leaves and they have leave on the bank per policy, they can cash out a certain amount of leave. By policy, we, if everybody left, we wouldn't be able to afford it. But what we do is we put 25% of that total amount aside for those who leave and cash out so that that will help pay for those who leave. And then the non-spendable encumbered invoices are invoices that we know of, but have not come in yet and have not been paid. So with that said, our projecting ending fund balance or new fund for the new funding request is about 15.2 million. So I'm, you can see we're not in the negative right now, and we're not in the negative next year. Again, that is because of one-time funding. So as we, we were already starting in the 2022 annual budget. I have the the 150 pages over here that I've got to read and go through after, after we're done with this. And I think we're coming back within a month to have conversations about the annual. As I'm looking at them and the filter that I'm using, and I would recommend the council look at, we really need to stick to one-time funding and not fund ongoing projects with ARPA funding. Because we, as you can see, based on just the request today, this, this general fund forecast does not include anything that could be new or added in 2022 that we're still seeing a negative fund balance by 2024. Also, just a couple of side notes, and I know they're at the bottom of this page a little bit, just a couple of them. This does not assume a 1% property tax, which is about 700,000 per year. That is a decision point for the council during the annual budget. It also does not assume the new tax that's on the November ballot for the new jail detention tax for body cameras, which is going to be about 6 million if that passes. So those are not included in these assumptions, which is what we have done historically based on council's preference in the forecast. Is there any questions? Or Emily, have I missed anything on this that you would like to make sure that we touch on?
No, I think, I think you covered everything. Thank you.
Is there any questions?
Any questions to the council?
Hearing and seeing none.
Next slide, please. This is just for our community that we have put this all on the website, that you please go out and look at all the requests are on there. The reports submitted by the budget office. If you have a public comment, you can do a written comment that's on there, or you can tune in on our October hearing and also testify it that way virtually. So did we just want to share where our community members can be engaged in this process as well? Next slide. Again, the reports, this is just saying what the reports are. They're all online as well. They're very technical reports, so you can see line items by code. It's to make sure that we're allocating accurately for our requirements. Next slide. And I think that concludes our work session. Again, if the council has any further questions after today, please let me know so that we can coordinate, get you a response before the hearing. I know myself, the budget staff, the finance team, and all the departments are more than happy to answer any additional questions. If you're thinking of any amendments, again, talk to us because we want to make sure that you're prepared and that we're prepared to address that on the October hearing date.
And also, I think, as with other budget amendment requests, we, we created kind of a new rule for ourselves that we present that 48 hours before any hearing so that we have either a response or, you know, just knowledge that any kind of an amendment is coming forward. So I would just encourage you to keep that in mind.
Any other questions? And I would just like to say one more time, thank you to the staff who put in all the work on this supplemental and the review and the conversations. It, it makes it better for me and for everybody. So I just want to say thank you.
Absolutely. I would also convey that from the council to the other staff members. But again, thank you, Kathleen, for your in-depth knowledge of what you're presenting. Okay, if, one more time, are there any other questions or comments by, by the council before we leave this work session? If not, we're going to, I'm going to give just a 10-minute, I am going to give a 10-minute break here prior to our starting the council time for today. So let's be back at 10:14. All right, thank you.